Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All righty, it's Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. It's about 9:04 a.m. Regular meeting, Liberty County Commissioners Court. I'd like the record to show that Commissioner Karbowski, Commissioner Arthur, and Commissioner Clark are here. So we do have a quorum, and we do have business before the court today. So if you would all rise, Lee's going to lead us in our pledges, and Sheriff's going to lead us in an implication.
Please face the American flag.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Sheriff Lee, you're having a problem, Lord. Thank you for this day. Lord, we come asking you, Lord, to help us remember those that have lost loved ones in the flood. And, Lord, we're asking, Lord, that there could be world peace and no conflicts, Lord. Lord, we ask for a lot of things. We ask for you to heal the sick. If it be your will, Lord, be with us, and those that are injured, and those that are rehabilitated, Lord. And, Lord, just be with those people and comfort them in the way that you can. But, Lord, we also, we don't want to neglect thanking you for all the blessings that you give us. We thank you for the opportunities that we have to come together as a government body. Thank you for the judges, the commissioners. And, Lord, be with them as they go through this agenda today and do the things that they believe is necessary to make Liberty County the best county in the state, Lord. Lord, I pray a blessing on each and every one of them. Thank you for all the Liberty County employees, Lord, and the work that they do. Lord bless them. And, Lord, most of all, help us encourage others and help others if we see the need, Lord. And please forgive us when we fall short. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Sheriff. All righty. Move right along to item number four, notices and proclamations. One of my favorite ones here. It, Liberty County Historical Commission has earned the distinguished service award for their outstanding work in 2024. Texas Historical Commission extends their congratulations on this well-deserved accomplishment and sends a thank you for your ongoing support of their appointees and their dedication to preserving Texas' historical cultural heritage. I think they ought to make that like a decade worth. Maybe, you know, it, anyway. Mr. Jameson, I know you're here today. If you would, who else we have with you?
We have three members of the commission.
Well, we have the historical commission, Texas Historical Commission, this is 2024 distinguished service award to Liberty County Historical Commission. It's active in well-balanced preservation program. And I will say it's active, and it's very active, and well-balanced. It'll be in a long balance, yeah. Better than certain quarters. So, thank you so much. Tell us about what's going on.
Well, first of all, we thank the Commissioners Court and the county judge for all of the support and help that you give our commission every year. You're always faithful, and that helps us contribute to the county and do our work. We're so, we're very appreciative.
We're pretty blessed to have you.
We have a lot of projects going on. Of course, we do a lot of work with markers. We have markers, so we have to spot and include state markers, county markers. We do a lot of cemetery preservation. Right now, we're working on a project on Obolot Road. It's called the Anderson Cemetery. It's right before, it stood elected before we get to the old country club road. We've been working on that project a number of years, but we're on the ground now with the preservation team. We're clearing out, surgically clearing, because there are old, there is a slave burial around in the back. It's a very old, old cemetery. We're still doing research on it, trying to find records and of its origins, and everyone is buried there, so we're going to identify as many as we can. But we have to work kind of like you do with archeology. We clear out the brush, hand-clear, and then we lay a grid, and we go through and clear each area and see if we can find stones or any kind of markings for grades or something, indentations in the soil and so forth. And we catalog all of those burials, whether they're identifiable or not. So it's very time-consuming, and that's something that we're dedicated to doing is to, because we have over 155 known burial sites in Liberty County. Many of them are unmarked, and we're trying to remedy that. But that's only, you know, cemeteries are a big part of our thing, what we do. It's all about preserving the history in Liberty County. It's very important that we do that going forward. We've worked with the county clerk on preserving the old records and the restoration project. Kudos to our county clerk. It's a, it's a very worthy project, and she found a way to fund it. So that's very important to the public. But anything, any type of worthy project in restoration, preservation in the county, we are in there working for the public. So we thank you so very much. And we appreciate this award from the Texas Historical Commission.
Yes, ma'am. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Introduce your members. Scoot in. Introduce your members.
Oh, okay, to my right, Paul Henry, and we have Beverly Davis and Martha Goodwin.
Good deal. Thank y'all, David. You better. Paul, appreciate you keeping that weed eater going there, buddy. I know. That's a rough job. All righty. Moving on now to public comment. And DeeDee, I didn't see anybody show up today, but then again, it, we were always going to have Commissioners Court, AC power or no power. The problem is, this courthouse was built in 1930. And the annex next to us, you know, was built in 1957. So one of them's 85 and one of them's 68. So you think about that and try to get the marriage of all the wiring together, and it is kind of scary. But our, sure want to give a good shout out to the City of Liberty and city manager, the mayor, and council, and all their, their guys that work with Elite Electric. Bruce, I think he had a good.
Dayton Electric.
And Dayton Electric.
Really, really put 100% in in getting this place up and running.
Yeah, it was, could have been a bigger mess, but it due to the mess got here anyway. But it, they, they jumped right on it. I was surprised that it was up and running this, this fast this morning. So it, and considering seeing how thick the wires were, Sheriff, I don't know if you saw them out there, but these were not wired, these are cables. Cables that hooked everything up, so. It only, mention of the new generator. If y'all will look on that generator, those are, it's sitting on a trailer with tires. So it's not here permanent, okay? It's, it's here when it's needed, or any place for, you know, in public domain, public entities especially, that it's needed. So we call the emergency management coordinator, and between him and everybody else that's in this room, commissioners and sheriff inclusive, we get it to where it needs to go, so the, the scratch goes where the itch is. Okay? But I was hoping that maybe the news media would have seen the tires underneath that generator. It's not here permanent, okay? It's here when it's needed. But I sure appreciate the Center Point Energy folks for their donation of that, that equipment. All righty. That's my public comment, DeeDee. I can't think of anything else. Bruce, you got anything you want to add about the?
No, it's, generator did come in handy for what little time we used it.
Yeah, I'll agree. All righty. Next item is declare conflicts of interest. I don't, anybody have anything that they want to declare? Okay, all righty. Let's move along to the consent agenda. Dwayne, was there anything to add on? Kim, you have anything to add on?
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Take it.
All right. Motion for Bruce.
Gerald, did you have something?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. And it's, it's yours, I guess, Greg. It looks like we're increasing two items by $298,000. Is that right?
That's a, that's a capital lease on the truck you bought. And we have to recognize the source of revenue to pay for the truck, and we have to increase his budget to buy, to make available to buy the truck.
Okay.
It's, we never send the money, but it's just an accounting entry.
Okay, it, it just, I didn't quite understand. It looked like there were two increases, and there's not, right?
There's two, I mean, it's a time cash transaction. We still got to put it on.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, and the other one I had, I guess it goes to Lee. It says you're adding two deputies?
No, that's not me. District Clerk, she has a special revenue fund. This is derived from the money that she collects in her office. They go into the district clerk's record management.
Okay.
Fund is similar to what Lee was using to restore those books and creating two deputy positions.
Okay.
Just to be funded out of that, which is funds that only Commissioners Court and her executive board.
Okay.
Dedicated money can't be used for anything else. It's a district part.
So these aren't permanent positions that are being added?
They're going to be.
They will be.
They're going to have them in the next budget.
Oh, okay. So it's just through the end of this budget cycle?
Yeah, it's just in the budget cycle. Next budget, we plan on putting it in there, and it's going to be funded again through the special revenue fund. Throughout the year.
Okay.
And not through tax.
Okay, through her revenue stream that she has. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for Bruce, saying for Greg. Are there any further comment on this? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Regular agenda, item eight one from me. Report from the Liberty County Sheriff on the repairs to Liberty County Jail. Sheriff, if you would, not picking, but I'm just saying, let's have a recurring moment here at each court, so we'll know too exactly what's going on.
Yes, sir.
It, that way when, if and when we get to go see the commissional jail standards, we know, all we can know. Yes, sir, yeah.
So, just an update. The door locks and the intercom system that were approved to be installed, it was discovered when they were coming in that we needed 40 more locks. There's going to be additional charge. I'll total all this up in a minute. Additional charge is like 136,590. The, send that, the vendor will be here on August the 4th to be working on the door frames and making sure they align with the new locks, and their estimated time to complete that is one week. Then on 8/11, they're going to send their people in, installation team, to install the safety controls, the security controls, and that has to be done before the locks can be put in. So they think that will take maybe a week or so. I got a quote for key cards. One of the things that came up after the fire was that the, if the master control couldn't open, buzz open the doors, you had to have a key to open up the doors. Well, all the keys were in master control, and then you have a whole ring of keys. So we got a quote for what's called key cards, that the CO in charge of the dorm plus the supervisor will have a card that they can access and open the doors. And that would be, again, let's see, an additional 140,864 to do that, if we do that. These have not been approved by Commissioners Court. I'm just showing out, I've got some quotes to do some things there. The fire is a restoration for the fire that was there. The cleanup has been completed, and right now, the work is kind of on hold until Matthews working on helping us figure out how we're going to do the expanded metal on the roof, where they're, we're breaking through, because the current roof has to be taken, the ceiling has to be taken out.
Yeah.
And new supports put in and everything. We got a quote for just the dorms on the restoration side. It's like 190,045 to do that. And that's, does not include all the restoration that had been done by the insurance company. I believe like 300,000 Matthew, if they can fix it by the insurance company, we can fix the rest of it. The shower panels are being replaced. Maintenance went in and is building supports for the shower panels. All the shower panels are not the same, so they're having to, it's an old facility, so they're having to go in and build the supports to put in. Inmates before had gone through and chipped underneath and made an exit to try to get out. These are three-sided, and so they won't be able to do that. The plumbing, if we all took the tour, you saw the drains that were stopped up. Those have all been repaired by Festus. The toilets, the showers, the sinks have either been repaired or replaced, and the replacement parts are a little more expensive since the jail's alone to get the replacement parts. And it's an estimate that with the drains and everything on all the stuff they've done, we've spent around 200,000. The dorms JK, L&amp;M have new lighting. Plumbing has been repaired. All the holes have been corrected, because we're in the showers, and it's being painted at this time. Dorms A, B, F, G, and H, air conditioner problems are scheduled to be repaired as soon as the parts arrive. We have got the parts, it's estimated August the 1st, that the part will be there, and that will be up. The AC has been repaired in the dorms A, B, C, and D. The highback unit, we have a vendor coming in to live next week to assess what might need to be done there. A camera system, we'll have a person coming through tomorrow to a walk-through and give us an estimate on the security cameras and on where the person that has the cameras now is not, the vendor is not keeping up with whatever we can't get the ones we have repaired. The freezer's repaired, and thank Commissioner Karbowski for getting us over there in the hardtail unit, so we didn't lose any food. It's been repaired, and we've got all the food back. Today, just my estimate, we spent 300,150. It's estimated, and I just estimated if the Commissioners approved the, the other bids we had, that so far, we would be 2,148,415. But then we'd have to add whatever the cameras cost, and the expanded metal on the east end. We didn't get a quote for that. Once the fire restoration is done, by the way, the fire panel that we got colored on for the deficiencies, all the efficiencies will be gone. Everything will be 100% then.
Okay.
As of yesterday, we had 111 in our facility. We have 165 out. We have duty judges, paper ready. 25 of them are in our facility, 25 of the other facilities that we have. We currently have tenant and professional officers in class, and they'll be licensed. Instead of getting temporary license, now we're having to go in class to see if they can pass the test. And so we have tenant classes starting yesterday.
What is TDC's answer as far as intake?
They've changed some things up. They don't, when they, they get transferred, they don't even begin that day until a couple of other days to get the paperwork. They said they're overloaded and just can't get to them. So we're on the list, and as you know, I use you as a lifeline sometimes to help. And if the person we're using now doesn't come through, which is, he's pretty up with the jail commission, maybe I'll be calling you to help us.
Yes, sir. Okay, but, good deal. I mean, it's, everybody wants to know where we're sitting on this, and it's a great report. Thank you.
You know, I don't know what the cost of those other two deals will be, but I was, Commissioner Karbowski kind of always puts me on the spot and asks me about the numbers. Well, I figure it's going to be less than, just based on what I have now. It could go up, but it'd be less than 3 million, so.
Yeah.
It's a lot less than the 5 million we was originally looking at.
Yeah, that was our anticipation.
If you tell me to spend 5 million, Commissioner won't do it.
Yeah.
No, no.
No, okay. So Judge, that's my report, and I'll have another one for the next.
Great, thank you, Sheriff. Sure appreciate that.
So I, I remember the number being about a million dollars for these locks and intercoms. So, so we've approved that so far. So we're still a couple of million away from getting the completion, because I only heard about 300,000 worth of increases, because some are going to be offset by insurance.
That's, that's all I've got, that, if you're talking about working for it. When I'll come to Commissioner's Court, the only, I haven't got four things approved, so I'll just get the camera quote in.
Okay.
But the additional things will total up to that, less than 3 million.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll come to Commissioner's Court when I get the exact thing, and Matthew's helping me on one. So, definitely on one, so we'll get that done. We'll be able to.
Good to hear. Thanks, Sheriff.
Carmel, you got to turn that on, but. You guys over there in the jury section, it's real hard to hear you. You got to turn that mic on, Tom. I mean, half of Bobby's sits probably not even recorded. So the mics are real important. If you're talking and the mic's not on in front of you, the chances are nobody's hearing it on the recording. And it's important to get good, clear recording, so. Just bringing that up.
We used to have a microphone that hung down when that, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of like in a boxing ring, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, these are nice, because you can move them around, but we have to remember to turn them on. So, anyway, I was just.
Okay.
Hopefully, we got it. Bobby speaks dice and loud, but at the last meeting, AJ comments about the donations and stuff. I couldn't hear any of it, none of it got recorded. So it's, it's a problem we need to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
All right. And that was an information only. Matthew, there's no action on this necessarily.
You did do a motion to accept the report.
We can do that, yeah. Need a motion to accept.
Making motion to accept the report from our sheriff.
Motion from Bruce, saving David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two, also, is consider and approve an interlocal agreement with the regional public defender office, local government corporation for the representation of indigent defendants in capital murder, which is a death-eligible cases to begin October 1st, 2025, and expire on September 30th, 2026, with an automatic renewal of one year. Pretty self-explanatory. Matthew, is there anything you want to add to it?
No, I'd say that we do.
You want to turn your mic on?
Yeah. We've done this for extended period of time.
Do you see the other one might add? Just use the other one. Yeah, there you go.
But it is necessary, defense costs for capital murder case or for capital punishment cases are extremely expensive. So I do encourage y'all to approve this.
You know, out of curiosity, what's the usual cost of a capital murder trial?
Oh, over a million.
Over a million?
Yeah, it, it's not just the attorneys themselves, which are significant, but all the, the experts the defense has to have as well.
Right. All right, what's the other court?
Has it been approved?
Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, from the hardest-working man in show business.
Yeah.
IT Department, Nick Dennis, considering and approve the quotes for the new permit department building infrastructure and phone line transfer. It'd be 60% down payment of 13,668.42, leaving a balance due of 9,112.28 to A1 Telecom. Nick, what do you have?
So after reviewing the building, looking at the work and labor involved, we got to blow out all the old infrastructure, old network cables, get everything out and, since it is going to be our building, we're going to do it right. This is going to get us prepared and have everything we need to get permits up and running and rocking and rolling, so.
Good deal. Did you throw in some extra for new tennis shoes? Because after, after, last two days, I think you're going to need them.
I know Miss Soladis itching to move in.
Oh, she's ready to go. She's ready to go.
Make a motion to approve.
I got a motion from David to approve.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Also from Mr. Dennis, and item number eight four, consider and approve the quote from A1 Telecom for the auditor's office to get moved to 400 Main Street. This quote covers the equipment, labor, and setup to make the building move in ready for their department. Nick?
Yes, sir. Let me pull this up. The information wasn't on there real quick. I called those one there. It's for our auditor's office to move on in, and this will be everything we need to get them up and running as quickly as possible, because I know we're on a time crunch with that. The total price is 9,430.80. We're looking for a 60% down payment of 5,658.48 to get started on the project and just get moving as quickly as possible, so we can get them up and running.
And then we'll buy the equipment now, but we're going to just put it in.
Exactly, absolutely. We just got to have it ready to go, and then we're going to rock and roll.
That closing date's what, the 1st of August?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, okay.
Yeah.
There you go.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David, to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Get some rest there, buddy.
I'll try.
Okay, all right. Number eight five, Ms. Chambers, considering and approve the renewal of Liberty County Clerk Records Archive Retention Plan for fiscal year 2026, including the continued collection of a $10 fee. The fund the plan is authorized by Texas Local Government Code, Section 118.025. And Lee, this is what we talked about earlier today. We just need to.
Make a motion to approve today.
Motion from Bruce, second David. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment. I talked to Lee a little bit before this, because if, when you look through the documentation, there's like a 2.5 or 2.6 million dollar contract that, she says it's fully funded. And so that, that gives me the ability, the feel-good that we can go ahead and pass this, because it was very large numbers that we can go ahead and pass this because it was very large numbers at the end of this thing.
Well, believe me, Mr. God would let you know real quick.
Yeah, I know. I trust Wayne.
All right.
That section of the code that I quoted is where they create the special funds and how and when we use it. So that's we operate under that code.
Excellent.
And we're very strict and need compliance with it. So.
Thank you, Lee.
Good. All right. We got a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, six, from Mr. Clark, over precinct four, consider approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct Four and the city of Dayton to provide safe and well-maintained public roadways, including city streets for the benefit of its citizens at a reduced expense by avoiding costly duplication of manpower, equipment and other resources. Your standard interlocal agreement, right, Gerald?
Yeah, it's just a continuation of the agreement that's been in place with only the dates and names changing slightly there. So that's all it is.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, seven, same thing, except we're going to be talking about the Old River Drainage District, number one. And it's interlocal agreement between Liberty County and Old River Drainage District, number one. That Old River Drainage District, they're mostly kind of south of Dayton area, south of.
It actually, well, they have property or they have some of their fallouts on the north side of 1960. They kind of originate up there.
Yeah, they originate there.
And then kind of cut through. And so Mary Graveson spent time lately on some of the things they're having. And in fact, we got, we were able to get some relief from the railroad on some old pilings that were left when they did a bridge replacement project on Highway 90. So yeah, we've been working together. It's just, it's time to renew the agreement.
Congratulations on getting some work with the railroad that.
Hey, that was a.
Yeah. Hey, they really are nice guys.
It was a pleasant surprise.
Takes a little help from your friends.
But their people ran off berries, folks, who were trying to remove some pilings with chainsaws and said, get off our property, you know? And so there was some intervention. And again, I'll give kudos to Representative Holt's office for helping us make contact with a number of folks to get this to happen. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of other folks that are helping make things better for us.
Good. Motion from Greg. Second. Second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
So I have copies. I need yours and Ms. Hotashack, I mean, Ms. Chambers.
Okay.
We've been talking Hotashack and.
Yeah.
History stuff.
It is history. A lot of history there. Okay. Number eight, eight, from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve progress payment number five from CNA Construction LLC in the amount of $202,660.40 for ARPA sewer system improvements. Again, y'all look at that, ARPA. Okay?
Are we just about finished with those two projects, one for Ames and one for Harden?
I think they're getting close, but we're still getting backend stuff. So I'll find out for sure how much further we have because we have a meeting usually once a month on the ARPA.
And this is for the city of Ames using ARPA funds. Backup with all signatures attached to the packet. Melinda?
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory.
It is.
I just have to make sure I put ARPA on there so y'all know it's not our funding.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Gerald, you have?
Nope. I'm good. I'm just letting everybody know, vote nay.
Appreciate it. Okay. Eight, nine, from Ms. Soliday, consider approve LGA Engineering Invoice, number 202513645 for the city of Harden, wastewater engineering services in the amount of $3,678.51 using ARPA funds. Invoice attached with signatures. This is a correction from the June 24th court. Melinda?
I inadvertently missed the second page. I have another line item. So thankfully, the auditor has found it. So I am excited.
Imagine that.
I know.
All righty. What's say the court?
Has it been approved?
Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 10, from Ms. Soliday, consider and approve variance request from Spearpoint Engineering LLC regarding Gemini Section Two and Section Three. Request for variance is to postpone recording and bonding of Section Two and Section Three until each section is ready for paving activities in 2026 and 2027 respectively. Matthew, you got anything you want to add to that?
I support that variance request. I can see how it's in the developer's interest to ask for this. This helps them, you know, like it says, with their bonding capacity. But what it also does is lock in the review to the rules they currently stand. So they, they're, and I mean this with all my respect, they are, you know, asking to get the benefit of the current rules, but also not have to actually do anything that the rules require construction immediately. So I can't support it.
It's kind of like asking for a master plan without filing a master plan.
Yeah.
I'm going to move, we take no action on that.
You take no action or you can.
No, table it.
Table it.
We'll table it.
Or you can deny it.
You can deny it.
Okay. I'm moving to deny.
Thank you. Got a motion from Greg to deny. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. And that, that item is denied. You know this one? By the court. Okay. Item number eight, 12, from Ms. Soliday, consider and approve various requests for tarking and downs relating to wet bottom ponds. Attached, please find their letter and a letter of no objection from LGA Engineering. Okay.
These were originally on the 610 agenda and we had just kind of held off until we got more information on the wet bottom ponds. And then Commissioner Hogg asked me to go ahead and bring it back forward. Now we've got the information.
Yeah. They're engineers here today, right?
Yes.
Yeah. You don't come up and give us anything you want to add to it or? Caught you off guard, didn't it? Yeah.
My knowledge, if there's any questions I can answer, I don't have anything further to present.
Well, pleasure. We just had one question.
I might warn you, Mr. Clark might have a question for you. Okay?
You have an overall drainage plant and this fits in with that drainage plant?
Correct.
Okay. Because I didn't want to approve it, but then if you hadn't already done the overall drainage and approved this, and then it went, come down the line, it didn't work out well.
It's right. So LJ's reviewed a master, which is the overall ultimate condition. And then this is kind of phase one specific, but it fits with that overall.
So this will be about the fourth time since I've been on the court that we've approved this variance. And so it's likely something that will need to be addressed when we do some updates to our building guidelines. Because most, most of the developers want these wet bottom ponds for the amenities that they present to their new community. So it doesn't appear to give us any issue.
And I had asked LJ to put that on their notes for when we start redoing them.
Yeah, okay.
Make a motion to approve. You'll let Ms. Chambers, give Ms. Chambers your name.
Yes, my name is Louis Alouias Paus, and he was.
Okay. And you're with who?
Texas Professional Engineering.
Thank you.
Bruce, that was a motion being approved, correct?
Yeah.
Second from Gerald.
Yes.
All right. Got a motion of second. Any further discussion? Sir? Yes, sir.
Is this one of the variances that we talked about, a liberal and dry hydrant reuse for part apartment in County Department?
Yes.
Yes. Getting that added in as a little dry hydrant for each pond.
Yeah. No, I know. There's been a lot of them. When we had the meeting over at my heart, so we discussed it and they.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right. Got a motion of second. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 12, from Ms. Soliday, consider approve the tarking of downs preliminary plat for phase one. This development is in precinct two and has 322 single-family lots. Attached, please find the LGA Engineering's letter of approval. Okay?
Now, just to clarify for y'all, because I know there's been some questions. What LGA does with these preliminary plat approvals and the final plat approvals is they make sure that the developments are following our current rules and regulations. So basically, they send me, they recommend for approval so they don't see that they're doing anything that's not in our rules and regulations at all times.
Well, this is our current rules and regulations and the state's current rules and regulations as well.
Correct.
Okay. We'll make sure that everybody understands that.
Right.
We don't make up our own rules. We have to.
No, I just heard development regulations. But yeah, there's state rules on it.
There are some changes I would like to make.
Oh, yes. And we're working on it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Bruce, second David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. One more, Melinda. Let's see. Number eight, 13, consider and approve estimate payment request number four to King Solution Services LLC in the amount of $194,962.44 for the ARPA-funded city of Harden sanitary sewer rehabilitation. All backup with signatures is requested is attached in the packet. Again, this is ARPA-funded. Okay?
You say ARPA? Make a motion to approve.
Yeah. Motion from Bruce. Second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you. All right. Number eight, 14, from Mr. Brown, consider approve reimbursement of Turner's One, Grand Oaks. That's the development up in the Cleveland area. Explanation of the 2024 reimbursement is attached in the packet. All right.
Hey, how are y'all?
Good morning.
Good morning.
How much is this reimbursement?
The 254,300.
And what years does this include?
This is 24s.
24s. Okay.
It's all 24 selected.
All right. We'll make sure. So we'll be paid up until next year. Sound good?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, saying David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Number eight, 15, from Mr. C over the purchasing department, consider and approve the transfer of assets. Asset number 4136 is a good old 2025 mobile command post from the fire marshal to the office of emergency management. Number, letter B is asset number 4095, a cascade system from the office of emergency management to the fire marshal. And item number C is asset number 4133, a hazmat compressor from the office of emergency management to the fire marshal. Andy, you're just racking up all kind of good stuff.
Yes, we have one person over those two departments that thinks I look to mingle.
Yeah.
So this will put them back where they need to go and make them accountable for return asset loans to them.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. All right. We effectively split the sheets. Okay. Number eight, 16, from Mr. C, pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, chapters 2254 and 2269, consider and approve issuing a request for qualifications. Number 25-12 for professional architectural and engineering services for the development of a new county jail facility. And if applicable, discuss and take action on the following proposed items. Minimum qualifications is one. Scope of services would be two. Selection criteria will be three, and the evaluation committee would be four. Harold?
Okay, so maybe a week ago, the evaluation committee met along the Central Road from Bickerstaff. We discussed the different options, methods of procurement for construction. Sent this together from the committee meeting, what everybody agreed on. I should have this in your package. How it's going to be evaluated, whatever. We have to do the architect first. Once we have our architect, then we can decide. Got one of these design bill for SCM, AR or whatever. And you got three members of the committee right here if you have any questions about. I think she's been pretty tough.
We might also note that none of the members of the Commissioners' Court are on that committee.
Correct.
I would, I would actually like to add somebody to the committee, at least somebody, I'd like to add somebody from the public. You know, that's not a county employing some evaluation committee. Maybe somebody with a little background in construction or.
First of all, I want to say hurrah. We finally got here.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second David.
We're going to, we're going to consider adding somebody else.
That's not only.
Yeah. We would have to. Yeah. All right. Is there any further discussion?
Okay.
Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
So that sounds like agenda item number one for the next meeting.
Yeah. No, Sheriff's got the first item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could be number two.
Number two then.
Sheriff's number one on our hearts. Number eight, 17, from Mr. C, considering approve the first quarter premium adjustment in the amount of $11,585.30 to McGriff Insurance Services for additional items that have been added to the county insurance policy. Harold?
This is first quarter January, January 30th of our insurance. We've added, we've added the $300,000 truck and two other things. I think this maybe has a Tarver Abstract building on it too.
Yeah.
So after you approve it, they'll go and check it out by next Friday.
Okay.
But that's all it is, just additional premium for additional assets around.
Yeah. So this does include the new building because it's pretty hefty.
I think it does. Yeah. Pretty true.
Okay.
Want to make sure we get an insurer.
Make a motion. I would hope so. Yeah. Got a motion from Bruce. Second from David. Is there any further discussion?
No, I would just say I'd like Mr. C to go check to make sure that building is in this so that we don't have any kind of gap in coverage after we take ownership.
Okay. All right. Got a motion of second to approve. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 18, from Mr. C, consider and approve transitioning to Texas Comptroller Statewide Procurement Card Contract 946-M4 by way of the attached addendum. And if applicable, authorize Heather Dill to serve as program administrator and to complete and sign all necessary applications and documentation required for enrollment. Harold?
Y'all approved a few cards, procurement cards issued at home, probably a couple of years ago.
Yep.
The only ones using it is the DA's office. And the reason we got them cards is when you have witnesses from somewhere else, mostly out of state, there was always a hassle of trying to.
You got to fly them in.
Using purchase order doesn't help if you're trying to check somebody at a hotel.
Yeah.
I've been calling at home, had to give my Express card before to get somebody checked in. So we got that. So it takes care of that problem.
Nope. Mr. God paid you back.
He did. And I think they got three or four cards for the transport officer. I'm not sure they ever picked them up, but it's too late now because now the state has gone to a new contract. This is going to the City Bank. This is going to the US Bank. And right now Heather Dill in my office is the administrator on the old one. She deals with any problems and.
She does a good job.
Yeah. So y'all want to just make her the administrator on this one? And there is an addendum to the original agreement that shall pass that is to be signed.
Good. Any problem with that, Matthew?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Looking for a motion of second.
Like a vote.
I'll second.
Motion from David, second from Gerald. To approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along to number eight, 19, from Mr. Dennis, consider and approve adding a copier for JP Precinct Five to the Platinum Master Contract for a monthly cost of $125.83 a month.
This location, their copier they've had for ages, off lease, finally died. They have no maintenance contract. Just getting them set up and rocking and rolling so they can continue business as usual.
Are they still paying for their own machine?
No, it got decent done. I had them verified. I'm trying to make sure all departments triple check before we go this route.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight, 20, from Mr. Poston, County Attorney's Office, consider and approve payment to Tarver Abstract up to the amount of $775,000 to include purchase price and undetermined closing cost for the purchase of 400 Main Street Liberty, Texas, 7757, how to be paid prior to closing on August the 1st, 2025. Catherine?
This is just to approve the payment to include closing costs. The purchase price, if you recall, was $760,000 of the Tarver building. And we rounded up to include closing costs. I don't anticipate it being this full amount, but this covers us. So when the time comes, Duane and Kim have the authorization to go ahead and move forward with that payment.
You good with that, Duane?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Likewise, nays, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-one, from Mr. Poston and Ms. McCarty over in the attorney's office, consider and approve interlocal agreement between Harden ISD and Liberty County, Constable Precinct Three, for one school resource officer for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year standard contract.
This is, this is a renewal between Mad Dog's office for Deputy Constable Bishop to be stationed in one of the Harden School, schools. The only thing that changed as far as terms was the amount of the salary of the deputy, as that increases every year due to costs of living. I do believe that this agreement was approved by the Harden ISD last night at their board meeting.
Okay. Motion from Greg, second from David, to approve. And that is for nine months out of the year that they will be at the school?
So the way that the contract reads is that they are responsible for payment of that deputy constable's salary from August first of twenty twenty-five through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. All right, so if you see Deputy Constable just parked on the side of the road somewhere that you know is assigned to the school, but it's during the summer months when school is out, they're back to working there in the precinct for that precinct, Constable. Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion does carry. Thank you, Gerald. Number eight twenty-two, from Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty, consider and approve master services agreement between Liberty County and Sight Hound Incorporated for desktop license for AI redacting software to be used by the Liberty County Attorney's Office in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars per license to renew automatically every year. That ought to be interesting to watch. They're going to be redacting social security numbers and names and such with AI.
Mainly license plates. We took a demo, I believe it was week before last, this program is much needed, we are getting a lot of public information requests for body cams, dash cams, and we just don't have the capability of editing those things in our office. It's also a very lengthy process, this speeds it up a bit for prosecutors. Nick was a part of that demo, he liked it, none of the information contained in those cameras are stored or saved or turned around and sold, so we did like that. This twenty-five hundred dollars, we have in our budget, but this is for one license to be placed on a desktop within our office. The contract does allow for additional licenses in the event that the district attorneys would like to purchase a license as well. I would ask you to approve the master contract in your packet, but with the caveat that I include a non-appropriations clause with it.
If I could say something real quick, we did the demo.
Yeah.
I know I personally supported them and the district attorney's office with, you know, trying to find solutions and stuff like this. This offer is going to speed up and expedite lots of their day-to-day operations, so I was impressed with it, and just having one seat license for the county attorney's office will be very, very beneficial to them, and I also include the district attorney's office as well, because it's something they can also incorporate to, if they choose to go there, but yeah, I think it's going to be awesome.
And we need it yesterday.
Yeah. Well, pretty handy when you have requests, public information requests.
Yes.
For redacting. All right, let's save the court.
And what do you want to add to that?
A non-appropriations clause.
It's in the documentation in the packet, correct?
Uh, no, I haven't added.
I haven't add, you haven't added in?
I have a, I have a standard little form that I added, I'll get it to you.
Got a motion from Greg. Need a second?
Second.
Second from Bruce, approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-three, from Mr. Whitmire, consider and approve the acceptance of Road three seven seven four into the county maintenance system for all purposes. Said road being located in precinct three of Liberty County, Texas, and connecting to County Road three seven seven, and as further described in that document filed at volume seven five eight, page six five three of the official public records of Liberty County, Texas.
Yeah, it's in the bone road area.
Yeah, have we started the procedure of deeding this property to the county?
So this property was actually dedicated to the public a number of years ago, it's at that instrument, the seven fifty-eight sixty-three. It takes an affirmative act on the county's part to accept it into the county maintenance system. So it's been a public road all these years.
It just hasn't been maintained.
It just hasn't been maintained, or at least regular.
Make a motion to approve. Motion from Bruce, second from Greg.
Thank you, Matthew.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Okay.
So what is the, I mean, because this comes up a lot more than you would think, because people are, they have private roads and they're tired of maintaining them, and they want to know, so I need to know what the process is for moving a road from private to public, so do we have that documented somewhere?
It's codified.
Yeah.
Meaning it's laid out specifically in statute, and you, we have to get it approved by court, but it is something that you have to be willing to accept, the court has to be willing to accept. The statute also provides that the road must be of a certain quality, it must meet, our county roads are third-class roads underneath the description of the transportation code, so those roads that we wish to adopt must meet those standards, county standards, third-class road standards. And then I believe there has to be public notice, you have to send out letters, or you have to send out letters.
So I looked, yeah, I looked at that, you, you don't if, in an acceptance, if there's a discontinuation, alterations, closing, abandonment, then you have to notify everybody. But I will say, in this instance as well, all of the adjoining landowners are behind this.
So the question that I have is, does this road meet those minimum standards of the class three road?
I couldn't tell you that.
And so, I mean, that, that's, that's where I stand on this, if it, if it meets the standards and everybody's in agreement that they want it, then I say yes, but I don't know that it meets those standards, there was no supporting documentation on this.
Yeah, I can't speak to the condition of the road. I can only speak to what I've covered so far. If Commissioner Whitmire is good with the condition, or can speak to that, then maybe...
Okay, but does it meet the standard? That's the question I have.
If you'd like more, more detail on the condition, we could table it, come back, you know, provide some supporting documentation on that.
It's needed for the training job, so.
Yeah, I hear you, but if we have a rule, or we have a procedure to follow to take something from private to public, I think we should follow it. Unless we're...
Really not private, it's the public?
It's a public road, see, and this is, it's kind of a confusing area of law, so there are actually kind of three different types of roads, there's private roads, and then there are public roads, and then there are county-maintained public roads, okay? So any, any person, you know, if you have a pasture, you have a dirt trail going through it, you can dedicate that to the public, and the public would have a right to go down it. However, the county is not obligated to maintain it, it takes the county's formal acceptance. It doesn't have to be a complicated formal acceptance, it happens all the time in terms of acceptance of plats typically involved, acceptance of the roads into the county maintenance system. But, but it does take that affirmative act. But yes, yeah, I can't speak to the condition, I know the homeowners have spent a lot of money over the years to maintain it, but I can't tell you with any certainty that it meets our third-class road definition.
Okay, so by our regulations, if we don't have that documentation, we shouldn't move it from...
Or wait until you do, yeah. Yeah. Table it.
What documentation do you want?
I don't know what a third-class road looks like myself, but I'm sure somebody does.
It sounds bad, whatever.
No, I would, I would say we would get our county engineer to take a look at it and see if it meets...
Third-class road is basically just a compacted dirt road. So I mean, it could be a trail out through somebody's pasture.
That's all I need to know, is it, does it meet the...
And, and this road, I am familiar with this road, and it does classify as a third-class road.
Okay, it's third-class. It is not an improved paved road.
No, it is not. Well, thank you, Bruce.
Well, because I truly didn't know what a third-class road is.
So it said, a public road that is less wide and has a smaller causeway than a first-class road, specifically it must be at least twenty feet wide, less than forty, and its causeway must be at least twelve feet wide or less than sixteen.
Yeah, it is, so.
Okay.
So then, then we don't really care whether it's dirt, whether it's asphalted, chip-sealed, it's still a third-class road, he's going to have to do some work on it, I'm sure.
How much road we talking?
For public safety and drainage.
No, that's not, no.
My motion stands.
Okay, motion from Bruce, second from Greg, and that was to accept.
Yes.
Good. Now, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion does carry. Item number twenty-four was going to be included in the executive session, and at this time we're not going to go into executive session. Matthew?
Well, I would ask that we table the first executive session item, but that we go into executive session on item two.
Item two, okay. Yes, ma'am.
With that, do you want to go and table item number twenty-four?
Table, yes.
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to table. Item number twenty-four, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays.
Make a motion, go into executive session.
All right, it is now ten twelve. Got a motion to move into executive session.
You seconded it?
Consultation with attorney, that would be Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven two five. We have a motion, a second with that noted for explicitly item number two.
Yeah, I think it's ten oh six.
Is it ten oh six? Well, I'm just a little bit ahead today for some reason. Okay, ten oh six, okay. Ten oh six AM. Okay, move into executive session, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays, we are. Okay, it's now ten forty-three, we're out of executive session, back in regular session. Is there any items to act on for the executive session at this time?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, all right, so there was, take no action.
Make a motion, take no action.
Before you do, please, please note for the record that no minutes were taken of that executive session, and please explain why, Matt.
Your Honor, would you like me to explain?
Please.
No minutes were taken because under the Open Meetings Act, whenever it is an attorney-client privileged conversation, none are required.
Okay. All right, so take no action, Bruce. Second from David. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays.
Make a motion to adjourn, sir.
Motion from Bruce, second from David, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned at ten forty-five.